Well, not right now, we're not. We're not billed right now.
We're not billed right now. The cities bill eight dollars.
Twenty.
Is that right?
Eight twenty.
Eight twenty. Is that what it is?
Eight dollars.
I think it's eight even.
Eight even.
Eight even for the disposal of the trash and six twenty for our pickup fee that was bid in two thousand twelve.
Eight dollars, sorry.
And, and, but, but where we're coming from, we will have to cover the dumpster costs. We'll have to get with each one of our dumpster customers and come up with a rate to charge them for that. You know, I mean, it's kind of a mess. The county's left us in. They say we're the only county left that way. Thanks a lot, you know. I, I wish we could have all discussed some of this prior to it going out for bid. Might have cleared a little, we might have, I don't know. I don't know what the right answer would have been. You know, hindsight's twenty twenty. You know, a bid proposal was very hard. What we received from the city was very vague as to what, what, what we're supposed to put together. We put together what we thought was the right number and the right answer and the right answers to the questions. And, uh, so that's where we came up with what we got. We believe it's the right number. You compare it to Manhattan, uh...
Clay Center.
Clay Center. Clay Center has their own land.
It's a core.
They're at fifteen dollars.
Yeah, it's all on there.
It's all on there. Um, I believe it needs to be in the vicinity of where we're at to make it work. We have, our trash gets taken ninety miles further than Manhattan does, thirty miles for every red Concordia's. And those numbers just kind of make sense in the freight from what other communities are, you know. So that's where I'm at.
But you're still getting paid, Ron, Eric, for the county for hauling.
Yeah, that's, that's a separate contract.
Right. We've had that, we've had that contract since, this is totally different though.
That's completely different.
We've had that contract since nineteen ninety-two.
And this is just for trash.
Yeah. The point is, the cost to the resident is still reflect, you know, reflected in how far we gotta ship it, so.
Sure, sure.
That's how we're getting eighteen compared to.
Yeah, we've had that contract since nineteen ninety-two when they first bid it, so anyway. Any questions? I try to answer.
Thank you. Anything else?
Can we get a response from Mr. Heiser?
Yes. I'm very comfortable with my bid. Been doing my homework for the last six months. We've been in the business since nineteen fifty-eight. With all due respect, I think we know a little bit more about it than a lot of people. Uh, the landfill fees of the county is charging the residents now eight dollars per account. They've already told me that it's over what it should be, but they have a lot of overhead. They pay Don Jones and Gary Score their salaries out of it, their insurance, the insurance on the buildings. They pay for the equipment. They just bought a new tractor. They had a new bulldozer. They pay for the, uh, fairground recycling center. They also pay twenty-four dollars a ton to send out recyclables from the recycling center. They pay the water bill up there. Everything comes out of landfill fees. There's no tax money in there. So that's how they can justify. When I first started looking into it, I tried telling them, I says, "How are you guys losing money? I don't understand. At eight dollars, the residents are already overpaying." And then they enlightened me that everything out there is paid to landfill fees. They're not just paying their fees to Rolling Meadows. They're paying the construction permits, the construction pets. They're paying everything. Everything's coming out of there.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can, I can, at least you give me my perspective or whatever kind of what I put together. I put together a little bit of analysis as best I could and kind of like you're saying, it's a little bit of a... There, there's some data out there, but it's, you can make a lot of numbers work, I think. So, um, I think part of it, and dozens kind of identified in their first sentence, you know, is that there's no accurate way at this point to determine the exact tonnage that the city's producing. I think that question was asked here. Um, so it is a little bit of a guess of what makes sense. And so that's kind of where I came up with my numbers. We got some information from Karen who's out of Mitchell County, the dump, to kind of give us her estimates, you know, the city's producing. That's where we got that hundred and thirty ton number per month. Um, you know, in July, based on her best guess, it was about ninety-ish for ton per month. Then what I did was I took, um, my community, I came from in Iowa, fairly similar type community, we have about nine hundred accounts, um, got their numbers. Their hauler does weigh all the trash, so he knows how much garbage, how much recycling that's on your table there, much recycling. And obviously, he also does grass cuttings, and again, that's separate. I think that's separate. So I just added the recycling and the garbage together, kind of came up with a per unit tonnage that we were producing. We have about two point seven one people per household. You have about two point one seven. So we have actually a few more people. It's a little bit more dense. Um, so I tried to tell, again, trying to find numbers that were working, you know, that, that were, does it make sense? And I think Fairfax, where I came from, again, had about ninety-three tons on average that we were averaging, if we were, you know, the size of what we had fourteen hundred fifty, that's kind of what I extrapolated it out. Okay, so, um, you're about, you know, uh, not quite double our size, but, um, so that's again where I tried to find some numbers. So kind of that combination of the two, again, just to try to do a little bit of a bid tab, bid analysis, almost like we went on a street project. And that's why probably really strongly suggests going forward that we have a little bit more of a, a tonnage report just for our community. I think it makes it easier for these situations when we are trying to bid it out so that we're not having to play these guessing games and, and, and it's easier for people to bid on that every four or five years. So that would be my, my input, and that's where I got my data from, kind of a combination of everybody.
Okay. Any other questions?
So to be clear, we have to make a decision tonight in order for us to have trash picked up January first, correct?
Well, again, according to Mr. Heiser, last month, if it was to be him, he would need three month leave time to, to get his vehicles and staff in.
No decision is a decision.
Correct. Yeah, I'd say no decision at this point would probably be status quo, potentially, potentially. I, I, I see, you know, a couple alternatives, you know, maybe I put that in a packet, you know, where, where we could require, we could come up with some hybrid type scenario where we get some accurate data over a certain period of time. So again, we could get accurate quotes going forward. I think, I, I think that unfortunately, you know, we're, everybody's just kind of throwing numbers out there. We're not quite sure what we're measuring.
To me, based on the information that we received, the numbers that we've gotten from the bids, and where all hell this has taken place, I would make a motion that we accept a bid from Heiser of Trash Service.
I would second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Miller that we accept the bid from Heiser of Trash Service.
Seconded by Councilman Graylon. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Tom, Katie had a follow-up on that.
Yeah, um, we've received two letters from the county, and in my opinion, they don't maybe necessarily have the language that I would feel comfortable with that formally terminates that agreement that we have with the county. It's a two thousand twelve agreement. I think you've, you've seen it previously. Um, so I, and we, either party can terminate that agreement by November the first. So I would suggest a formal action tonight that the city formally terminate our agreement with the county for trash services. That way I can feel comfortable that we're covered, that the agreement is for sure terminated. You know, they, obviously, that's their intent, but the letters just, they don't speci, they don't specify that agreement by date. So I would just like to send our own termination so that we are covered on our end. So if you could have a formal, based on what you just did, we need to have a formal action, and then I will prepare a letter, um, signed by the mayor, send it over to the county.
For November first?
Well, yeah, we'll get it done here in the next couple of weeks, yeah.
Motion to formally terminate our contract for trash pickup with the county effective, well, uh, would be effective January first of twenty seventeen?
Yeah, December thirty-one.
Okay, December thirty-first of twenty sixteen.
So.
Okay. Motion is to terminate our trash, uh, our refuse pickup with the county effective December thirty-first. Motion by Councilman Graylon, and seconded by Councilman Ponto. Any further discussion? Just a second. Question?
Oh, yeah, um, because you decided to take Heiser's bid, we, well, motion to, um, to vote, right? Is that what you've done?
Yeah, we, we, we have accepted.
We'd like, we'd like to, the council, to discuss the option of, we have about two hundred recycle customers. They would, well, we would like the option for those customers to be able to opt out of the trash service because they are producing much trash, um, or at least explore the options that we can maybe go with there.
Okay. Well, that's something we can discuss with staff.
So I just wanted to throw it on the table for you guys to start thinking about.
The request at the bottom of your letter, so you can.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that motion on the floors to terminate our trash pickup with the county effective December thirty-first. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the tree trimming from Paul's Tree Carers at an amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. Any questions for staff?
I do, actually. Um, how, so basically, if a city resident noticed there was a tree growing up into a power line or other, they would contact the city? And the city would then take care of it based on this, or how does it just work?
Yeah. In the past, the tree trimmer always went through town, and they're only picking up off the primaries. They're not taking any limbs off the yard, up in the yard itself. That's between the property owner and Paul or somebody else.
So they're basically, Ron, they're gonna go, they're gonna have them out of our primaries, and that's what they're gonna kind of focus on.
I'm planning on trying to do what we did, uh, after we done, well, we're gonna start them out from one end of the town. And let it go through and clear out our primary. And then the other thing that I included from the, from the other time, I want to clean out the streetlights. So, uh, there's a lot of streetlights out there that if you're not, were there, even lit, you're not gonna send. So we might as well get some bid out of what we're doing.
So when you say primary, like the main line that runs down Zersey, that would be, you're not, you're not, you're talking?
Well, the main, the main competitors, uh, a house service is a secondary.
Right, the one that comes off the pole to the house. That is the homeowner's responsibility.
Right.
But the main line that goes down the street which feeds those, that is what would be handled.
By him.
Or, or down the alley.
Or down the alley, where the primary is at, because they run on the street and down the alley both. Uh, although, uh, I would like to have the right to be able to go up in the yard and trim something off the secondary. If, if that's what I gotta do to keep the wire up in a storm or something, uh, I mean, if we leave it there, it's probably gonna cause some more trouble, so, I mean, whatever we do, I'm gonna kind of keep that right to do that.
Okay, so the citizens shouldn't have to notify you. That's something they should be noticing as they move through the city, basically.
Right.
Okay. That answers my question.
Do you have any, oh, sorry, man.
Tony, yeah.
I, I know we did this, you say two thousand twelve, but why isn't this regular maintenance work by the city crew? I mean, I, you're busy. I understand this, that this should be regularly scheduled maintenance work.
Uh, and it should be. Uh, we've been in extensions for a lot of years for, for new stuff, and we haven't really been back on maintenance for a long time. And we can let it go. Back in two thousand twelve, what we went ahead and did that, we had a lot of outages because of the tree limbs. And there's other things that cause outages, but, uh, sunflower, anytime they have an outage, it costs them a lot of money. You know, thirty thousand dollars here is probably a drop of the bucket to them, but it costs them a lot of money for everyone those outages. And it's an inconvenience to other people. Uh, your tree limb could cause a little spike. Uh, it may burn up some electronic, something, uh, appliance or something. I mean, there's a lot of things that takes effect there that we're trying to prevent by having someone else do it. Uh, there's other things that have caused spikes. We can't do anything but swirls and burrs, but we follow up with what we can.
Do you have any idea how long it'll take?
Uh, the last time, uh, they, it's not a true timeframe, but when they started here, it took about three years to do it. But some of it was that they got started on our stuff, then they brought it out and did a lot of residential stuff that wasn't part of our deal, which, uh, took a lot longer to get our stuff done. And, uh, I've already talked to him that I wasn't wanting it this time. He starts on us, I want it done.
I kind of concerned me in this quote. There's really no time frame when they have to have it done.
Did they get it done in a pretty timely manner the last time? It just seemed like, I thought it took quite a while, Paul. I remember.
It took way longer than I thought it should.
Should that be in the contract then?
It's something that we could do, uh, because I've been thinking about doing that.
Work in conjunction with Cunningham's. They're kind of, I guess, I don't know what they're, now the receivable, or I'm sorry, the pay, you know, when we paid it, it was, over the course of just one year. So I don't know how, you know, how that jives, but the, uh, we started, the first payment was on December, end of December, so maybe they started even before that. And then the last payment was like January of, December of twelve, and then January of thirteen, or of fourteen, or something like that. It was just a little over a year, but.
Did they agree to remain on the job until complete and not put the job off for any other jobs like you put in that, or no?
Well, he said he would.
Okay.
Because, because he did classify them on.
Right.
And the other thing that they're gonna do is, instead of hauling that chips out of person's house, they're gonna deliver it out at the old pole yard, so anybody can have it if wants it. Instead of hauling way out in the country, I might just dump it out here and let our customer have it.
Ron, Ron, did they have any sort of metric on how much they do clear, how many hours they spend on our stuff, or anything like that? Again, just as kind of a.
Not that I've ever seen.
You know, hey, it took us hundred and, you know, four hundred hours or whatever to do all that, so then we can say, was it, you know, our guys cost us about thirty bucks an hour with benefits, everything, you know, to kind of to answer, you know, Tony's question, you know, there's a cost benefit, but curious.
At some point, it'd be nice to get back trimming around trees, but we gotta get through all this new stuff that we've been doing for a long time. Uh, once we get through with that new stuff, we've got to go into our pole replacements. There's over fifteen hundred poles in the town that are bad, you know. At some point, it'll cost trouble.
Is that something moving forward when we get all of our expansions done, that the crews can start, uh, plan, that they can work through the city? And so we can eliminate this thirty-five thousand dollars?
Eventually, I'd like to.
Billy?
Go ahead.
The other question I have is if there's anybody else that would have bid on this.
Uh, what I understand, he's the only one to certify and power my clerk.
Good. Okay, have a second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Audi that we approve the tree trimming for Paul's tree trim at an amount of thirty-five thousand dollars, and seconded by Councilman Ponto. Is there any further discussion? If there's further discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Question. Next item on the agenda this evening is a two thousand six Crown Vic, it's over a hundred thousand miles on it. Vehicle specs meet out of a stripped-down police package, burning of car, bricks, all that stuff is actually a performance package. Uh, vehicle list for thirty-six thousand dollars, and the trade-in, we're getting it for twenty-eight. You know, my concern about this whole thing is, you know, I understand what you're doing. I think you're doing it too great, what you're trying to do. But my concern is, I, I just don't feel that we did this. And then we, we kind of, just kind of, hey, this is what we got, this is what we want, and this is.
I did get a letter from them earlier for clear of vehicles.
Yeah.
Um, that should be included in the back. The light motor still doesn't bid on our vehicles.
Sure, but there's other Chrysler dealerships around in the, in the, in the area that I think, you know, personally, I just think when we're spending the taxpayer's money, it's good to get bids. And so, you know, so we're comparing it like, are we really, are we really getting a good price on this, or, you know, I love taking people's word for it.
Sure. No, what I was, what I was, well, yeah, we, we, the county did go through the bid process, and Boycherry Auto was the only one that submitted bids.
Yeah, well, did, we did, did we?
I, I did not go out there. And outside, outside the city, boy, I didn't go for a hundred. I did not.
Well, the big thing for me is, you know, all the other departments, we bid it unless there's an emergency and nothing, and nobody else makes that repair or what we're trying to do. We bid it, and, you know, and this, you know, we really didn't bid it. And, and I think, you know, for our, to be fair to the people of our community, we need to be bidding with stuff like this. And I understand where you're coming from. It's available, and you've got a great idea, but, you know, the only thing I'm really opposed to is the fact that it wasn't bid. And that's, that's my two cents where, you know.
No, that's, that's fine, but what I would, what I would point out was the vehicle bids that we did receive, and, and I did not go outside the county. And then I, I'm guilty of that. I didn't do that. Um, the price of this vehicle is, is roughly the same than if I did a base police package and had it built. This one's on the lot. It's already ready to go. And, and that, that's what I was, however, if, if you want to go through a bid process, we could, we could work that too.
Yeah, how long would it take you to, would it, would it be ready by the next council meeting if you did more bids, or would it take longer than that?
No, I, I'm not sure how all that works, because we, we've never done it. Um, so, I mean, it would be something I would have to get the secret trader on and figure out how that process.
So it might take two weeks, it might take a month, or just?
I, I would say less than two weeks. I don't think the county put theirs out for very long. I'm not sure.
Well, the other question I have, hey, this is, you know, just from the fact that I've done the council for a long now, but, you know, it seems like a lot of the cars that we bought, you said this had a heavy, uh, brake system on it.
That's correct.
Performance package and things like that. But in the past, when we've got some chargers, the one that was, uh, wasn't a police package, we had all kinds of trouble with the brakes, and, and we kind of had to rotate it out a little sooner. And then due to, uh, financial constraints, at one time, I think we bought some, uh, leased chargers that didn't have the police packages and stuff. I, you know, and it seems like in the past, our history has been that we haven't had a good luck with the cars that don't have the so-called police package. I'm assuming they have.
The first charger that you're talking about, it was a police package.
Yeah.
And for whatever reason, we couldn't, we couldn't keep a breaker front end under the vehicle. I'm not sure why.
Yeah.
Uh, the other, the last two you talked about, the twenty-ten chargers, uh, that we purchased, and we held on to those for almost three years.
Right.
Now, we did have some repair costs associated with those, uh, but those were a lot smaller cars than we're talking about today.
So is the suspension on this equal to a police-type package car?
Yes, sir. Uh, the, the, the actual specs of this car is, needs or exceeds the expectations of a stripped-down police package vehicle.
Well, that was the question. Like I said, I, I think it's a great program, but I just, I feel like.
Well, and I, I don't have a problem with that. What I'm spit is that realistically moving forward, we did buy a car this year. We're not planning on replacing a car next year because if we get this car, then our, our vehicle rotation, we're looking at figuring out some, some way to rotate cars. Our, our fleet is relatively near since, since we've started, um, and, and right now, our, our highest mileage vehicle is a twenty-one Tahoe, twenty-nine unit. It doesn't get used like the primary patrol vehicles do. And then after that, you're talking about forty thousand miles as our next high-speed model vehicle.
Is Dodge or Chrysler the only vehicle manufacturer that offers a police package?
Vehicle? No, they're not. Ford has one, and that's, that was bid on the shoot.
Well, just because Tom talked about going after the Chrysler reciting.
No, Ford, I mean, they, they, they did a Ford, like, could have got a Tahoe, uh, you know, through, through that, that particular process as well. However, that's a pretty expensive package.
It's up to them though, if they want to bid it.
Right.
They have to see it before they.
That's correct.
Is there a, a ratio of trucks to cars that you would like to have? Like, I've noticed.
Right now, we're about half and half, and with the explorers and the chargers, uh, and then we have another Tahoe. It, it's a good mix to have those for inclement weather, or, or when you have the high water that we had, just as recently as last year, the chargers didn't do very well, uh, but the explorers and the Tahoe did.
Yeah, I agree with you, Matt. And that's kind of what Chief and I were talking about as far as rotation, you know, is figuring out, hey, what's the recklessness of cars? And really, it'd be nice to kind of stay with the same type of format cars, so that jump, or let's try a Taurus next. I mean, it might be a few dollars difference. Kind of learn the car, I feel. It seems like some of the firms I see, they can't, they can't find their car that works for them, and that's what they get, but that's just a thought that we haven't put together yet, but. Any other comments?
Were you, were you having trouble with the Crown Vic, or did you just?
The Crown Vic is, uh, over a hundred thousand miles and yachts. We were, we were having some issues with the Crown Vic.
Maybe Eric is sure.
Because there's, you know, there's a lot of vehicles out there with more than a hundred thousand miles.
Correct, but they don't get used like ours do.
So it would only be natural then with, with the way that Crown Vic was being driven within the city, you get a hundred thousand miles on it, and you're gonna start having problems.
It depends on vehicle. The KHP trades your vehicle in at fifty thousand miles. I mean, doesn't matter what vehicle they have.
Andrew?
I'd like to make a motion to table until we receive additional bids.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to, uh, table the purchase of a patrol car until we have additional bids. Do I have a second?
Second?
Seconded by Councilman Ponto. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor of tabled the motion to lay out, uh, more bids, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries to table it.
And by more bids, you want, like, outside of the county, I mean, just like, understand, okay, like, Concord, or Salina, or Concord.
Other, other, Hayes, uh, Clay Center. Since we may end up back where we were, but I would just like to see. I understand, and, and, you know, I want David to know that we don't want to oppose what he's trying to do. We're just trying to, I think we need to be bidding when we're making these purchases. Since we don't, we're not gonna police, have a police car to finance at this time, we'll skip over that. And, uh, the next item on the agenda is determined.
Paul, just a second.
Yeah, I have one other question on that whole part thing, though. Um, were you at ten?
Yes, sir.
On the payment, was that intended to be paid out of twenty eighteen budget?
That would be the first payment, sir. So we would be spending money we don't even have the authority to spend right now. Is that true?
Sure. No, you would be fine. We would just set that budget, put in the twenty eighteen budget, you know, when we got to redo that and stuff. You would definitely put in your own debt payments.
Well, you could say about any debt payment going forward, any bond payment's got a thirty repayment history, and we don't, or any, so I understand what you're saying, but, yeah. I see it more, sorry, look, I see it more as a, we've already set our twenty seventeen budget, and now we're trying to buy a car, so eighteen makes sense, because then we can make adjustments for it. And I think some of the cars will be falling off at that point, but it's about.
You're paying a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
They moved by Councilman Ponto, that we adjourned. I have a second. Seconded by Councilman Paul. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We are adjourned. We will go into the workplace.
Katie, do you have any?
No, no.
Okay. Do you have some?
I do, yeah. I figured now I can get a little bit worried. Um, yeah, uh, not, not a lot. Here, I just kind of pass these, I take one, pass another, if I can agree. But I just kind of want to give you guys a little bit of update. Um, the, uh, what do you need?
Sorry, Chad.
Yeah. Water report, I did meet with the individual that's doing the, the testing, getting that set up. Biggest issue, their roadblock they're having, because there's a lot of permitting issues. That's why it's taken a little bit of while to get the results back. It's actually a portable unit, and so there's only so many of these pilot testing systems. It's like a water treatment that's on, water treatment facility, not a trailer, I don't know if you can say. The next issue they're having is phasing of power, trying to get the power there where they want to collect it. So that was an issue that's been tackled here the last week or two. So his goal is to have it online and going, and then again, have some data by, by the end of the year. So I thought that was a positive. Tim and Jim were, uh, working on the THM. I think that was a, a knock we kept getting. They have figured out a way to, you know, so we're not in violation of that anymore, which I think would be a positive from a PR perspective and also a safety, safety perspective, most importantly. Uh, the biggest issue is that, uh, the KDHE, I believe, is fairly slow in approving that method, because they want a lot of validation. And it's really all about when they're entering the chlorine and how they're doing, how long they're doing. I won't go into a lot of detail, but it's actually really interesting. Chlorine and organics mix and produces THM, so if they can. think would be a positive from a PR perspective, and also safety, safety perspective, most importantly. The biggest issue is that, KDHE, I believe, is fairly slow in approving that method, because they want a lot of validation, and it's really all about when they're entering the chlorine, and how they're doing, how long they're doing, I won't go into a lot of detail, but it's actually really interesting, the chlorine and, and organics mix and produces THM, so if they can hit it later on, and for a short period of time they can, it produces less THM, and THM, that stuff. So, just more in case people are asking about it, or want to talk about it, I do plan